All right. All right, we are returning to open session. It's 7:00 PM. We have, the first item is "Welcome to Central" by Principal Pete Gatz.
You probably wonder why this is "Welcome to Central," but as our--
I've explained this every time. This is the Hauser mix of Central School.
Right, right.
I just leave them to space and I show up. They're talking about it. I just want to talk to you all a little bit about what's going on at Central as we finish out the school year. We're currently supporting the Enviremona Club at Hauser by collecting pens, markers, and used pencils that are no longer usable by students. Terracycles, and we're going to recycle them through terracycle. The idea behind terracycle is that anything that is recyclable, and so it's a company that Hauser is working with, and we're supporting their efforts as the year comes to a close before all those things up in a garbage can, which is what a lot of kids do with them. Fifth graders district-wide, tomorrow we're going to be participating in Step-Up Day at Hauser, so all the fifth graders in the district will make their way over here and enjoy a day as a to-be-sixth-grader experience with teachers and walk a schedule and have different presentations of them throughout the day that Mrs. May and Mrs. Mullen has prepared for them along with their staff, so the students are very excited about that. You know, the last few days of the school year are always typical, a typical challenge, and especially with fifth graders, to try to keep their attention as the year comes to a close. I was given an opportunity by one of my fifth grade teachers, she reached out to me yesterday and said, "Would you mind coming and I want you to read, you know, do a read aloud with my stat, with my kids." I said, "Sure," and I popped in there and she had me sit in a chair and she handed me a wrapped book. And she said, "We do a picture, I do a picture book countdown with my students every year." And each of the books, they don't know what they are, and there's a theme behind each one of them that I want them to carry with them as they move beyond their years here at Central. So they had me, or she had me read "The Book With No Pictures," if you're familiar with that, and the fifth graders quite enjoyed me making a fool out of myself. So if you haven't read the book, check it out, the Riverside Public Library, it's quite an enjoyable read. And Monday afternoon, we'll honestly, we'll mark the end of the school year, but also the end of fifth graders at Central School. For this year, we have the annual clapout and award celebration, so students are very much looking forward to that. And we'll also invite Dr. Brownlow because it's her last day with students as well. And I do want to take this opportunity on behalf of my staff to say thank you for all of your work over the last four years because you left a lasting impact on District 96 and all the staff and students here, so thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Gatz. Is there any public comment?
On any matter?
Uh, let's see, I believe, on any matter, yes.
You just have to walk on up and give your name and your address, and then you can--
My name is Sam Levin, and I'm a resident at 8506 Parkview Avenue. And I guess, so I'm not premature, the first thing I would ask is, are you considering acquiring the Hollywood Community House? I heard that, and it came to my attention, and I investigated, and I found out that's one of the items that appears to be on your closed session. Is that true?
So in public comment, we're not allowed to have a discourse? It's just you commenting to us, and then we can take your information?
All right, well, I'm assuming that you are doing that. So based on my hearing that, I got a couple of comments I'd like to make. At this time, I do not speak for the Hollywood Citizens Association. Nevertheless, what I have to say may be of some interest to the association, and hopefully to you too. I believe the school district may not acquire the land on which stands the Hollywood Community House by eminent domain. School districts may contain, condemn for sites, but property already devoted to a public use cannot be taken for another public use which will materially impair or interfere with the former use unless authorized by the legislature either expressly or by necessary implication. The Illinois Eminent Domain Act recognizes as public use property owned by a not-for-profit corporation whose purpose include the preservation of open space, the operation of park space, and similar public purposes. There are three prerequisites to exercising the power of eminent domain. First, the condemning authority must have the statutory authority to acquire private property. Second, the taking must basically be for a public use. Third, the taking must be necessary. I recognize District 96 has deep pockets and willing to spend tens of thousands of taxpayer dollars to do the research and formulate opposing arguments, which took me about a half an hour today. What the board is doing is wrong, illegal, and a waste of time and resources. This assumes you're doing that, of course. This matter reminds me of the time the village of Brookfield came up with the harebrained scheme to cull the deer in the neighborhood. I learned that the plan to selectively slaughter the wild animal came about because residents complained about the deer eating their flowers. I went to the village board meeting when the culling scheme was discussed. I spoke against the stupid plan, and I told the complaining residents where they could put their two lips. Woodrow Wilson was correct when he said, "The problem with history is it repeats itself." Once again, the residents of Hollywood are victims of an unenlightened government coming up with another stupid plan. Your gripe is with District 209. They promised you the use of the new parking lot and athletic facility. You fell for their disingenuous good neighbor policy. Apparently, everyone is out for themselves, and now it's time for District 96 to bully the Hollywood Community Association. Please stop being bullies. You're spending our money on a plan that is illegal and unnecessary. According to the District 96 mission statement, "The mission of the Riverside Public Schools is to provide for each student a challenging education which promotes academic excellence, encourages creativity, develops critical thinking," and open your ears, "and fosters respect for self, community, and the environment." Two questions for the board. How does leveling the historic Hollywood Community House foster respect for self, community, and the environment? To paraphrase Crosby, Stills, Nash, and Young, "We are not teaching our children well by demolishing history for the convenience of parents, teachers, and staff." In fact, the board is setting a terrible example for our kids. How about if we come to Riverside and demolish your historic treasures? What's good for the goose is good for the gander. Second question, where does it say the school's district, school district's mission is to promote indolence and laziness? Too often, people criticize without providing constructive alternatives. Here's my suggestion. Why doesn't the board save the taxpayers a lot of money and instead invest in umbrellas stenciled with the District 96 mission statement for the parents, teachers, and staff who will be inconvenienced by the board's failure to pave paradise to put up a parking lot? Although I don't care where each board member puts his or her two lips, I do care where you bring your bulldozer. Thank you.
All right. Is there any further public comment? All right, if not, are there any board member proposed changes to the agenda? Okay, then we will move on to old business. The first item is our MOU, action item, for memorandum of understanding for DLA architects as presented. So is there any discussion?
Do we need to call a motion first?
Okay, I'm sorry. Is there a motion to enter discussion on the memorandum of understanding?
So I think, just 'cause, let's be, you know, make sure we're doing it correctly. And Jeff was the president for four years, and now we're under new. So I think you just, you make a motion to approve that item, and then when, once the motion's on the table, then you ask for discussion, and then we can discuss that, right? I just want to make sure we're--
All right. And is there a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding?
Second.
All right, is there any discussion?
I'll just--
Sure.
This MOU was the result of a fair amount of discussion between Vistara and DLA, and also with the Finance Committee and under Jeff, as Jeff, and myself. And what this represents is a continuation of DLA's work. It only, right now, includes schematic design, and the intent of that is to allow design to move forward, but still allow further refinement to future design fees on the basis of the existing conditions report. Vistara did a very good job of expressing the district's interests, and this is, I believe, and I think Jeff does too, but I don't hold me to committing him to anything. This represents a fair and appropriate agreement for us to move forward with the projects.
I have no comment.
Yeah, no problem. It's good for me.
I appreciate you guys taking the time to sort through that with everybody, get to a place where we can move forward, so thank you.
Sherri, any comment?
No, I just appreciate the future scope to be established.
I think that's important, and we get more clarification, so I'm fine with it.
Okay. Margie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marhol.
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi.
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber.
Aye.
Ms. Murphy.
Aye.
Mr. Muirhead.
Aye.
Mr. Hunt.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, next item is the Vistara contract, an action item. Is there a motion to approve the action item of the Vistara contract?
So moved.
All right, is there any discussion?
You know, Ramesh Neer has really been working with us without a contractual agreement, and because really he was looking at sort of bundling our projects in terms of his overall fees, so this represents, as we move forward with the schematic process, also moving forward with his work.
The project description matches what the effort that's, or the square footage is, or, sorry, excuse me, the project descriptions that are shown in the DLA agreement, and like I said before, Ramesh has been doing an excellent job of representing the district's interests, and he, I think he makes, he's a valuable addition to our team.
So the scope of this is pretty, I mean, fairly detailed on what exactly he's going to do and for everything, but the table, I'm assuming that's just his best estimate of what it's going to cost based on what we know now.
Uh, which table?
So, four, 4.1.
Oh, that ta, sorry, that table is his fee.
Right.
For each of, and so he's--
An estimate based on what he thinks he's going to have to do based on the exhibits provided, right?
Correct, yes.
So any resulting changes, this estimate's based on the 165 an hour that he has in there?
Yes.
Okay.
And he represents us through, through construction.
Yep.
And it, it's possible, but again, don't quote me, because my memory is getting, he may have extended the date of the contract to more accurately reflect the final construction schedule that DLA has been suggesting, but I think that might be the only change.
Yeah, I mean, there was some language in here to make this a little fungible as our needs might require, so I didn't see anything that stood out to me anyway.
Any further discussion?
No.
Margie, please call the roll.
Mr. Muirhead.
Aye.
Mr. Marhol.
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi.
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber.
Aye.
Ms. Murphy.
Aye.
Mr. Hunt.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, next item is the advanced approval for 515-19. Is there a motion to approve the advanced approval items?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I just appreciate the assessments that were added for certain things so that we can get an idea of what cost might be, or what the, you know, what requirements would be for changes, things like that. I like the edits that were made.
Mm-hmm.
And Jeff and Jim worked to refine this list, I know.
Jim, is there anything to note on the changes?
We pulled a couple things that need more research.
Yeah.
So it was a little small, and this then we started with. Nothing new to me.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Do you know how old the old plow truck is?
Your what?
Plow truck. There's a, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting that this go away, I just, it's, it's got a new truck with a plow.
It's got over 100,000 miles on it. It's a 2006, I think. It's mostly been used to plow, so those are kind of hard miles, too.
Sure, that's all. Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt.
Yeah, sure.
Concerned that it's ending, reaching end of life?
Probably.
Yeah.
100,000 miles, that are only local miles, that's, that's a lot of driving.
Yeah. Pushing snow. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Margie, please call the roll.
Ms. Kleiber.
Aye.
Ms. Murphy.
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi.
Aye.
Mr. Muirhead.
Aye.
Mr. Marhol.
Aye.
Mr. Hunt.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, next item, we have non-union salary recommendations for school year 2019-2020. Is there a motion to approve the non-union salary recommendations for 2019-2020?
So moved. Second.
All right, is there a discussion? I think we're looking at here is the increase to the superintendent's salary, noting a 3% increase, which is in line with the other--
I think that's the next item.
Oh, that's the next item, I'm sorry.
Still have to announce yet.
Oh, I apologize. I went ahead of myself.
It's about the same as what I'm saying.
So yes, the non-union staff salary recommendations are roughly a 3% increase. In aggregate, it's 2.96.
Eight, 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 2.98.
Oh, I'm looking at last year, excuse me, it's 2.98.
2.98.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Nope.
All right, Margie, please call the roll.
Mr. Muirhead.
Aye.
Ms. Murphy.
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber.
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi.
Aye.
Mr. Marhol.
Aye.
Mr. Hunt.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, next item now, we have the superintendent's salary recommendation for 2019-2020. Is there a motion to approve the salary recommendation of the superintendent for 2019-2020?
So moved.
Second. I don't know.
Sorry. It's yours.
So as noted, and as I was saying a minute ago, we're looking at a 3% salary increase, which is in line with the general increase for the rest of the administrative staff. Is there any further discussion?
Nope.
If not, Margie, please call the roll.
Mr. Barsadi.
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber.
Aye.
Mr. Marhol.
Aye.
Mr. Muirhead.
Aye.
Ms. Murphy.
Aye.
Mr. Hunt.
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, next item, we have our committee reports. So is anyone reporting on behalf of the Finance Committee? Jim, are you reporting on that?
I met with Jeff, and really, we just went over the contracts again for tonight's meeting that you already approved.
That we already approved. I was going to say, we already approved--
So you want to discuss them in a greater detail, right, yeah.
And he had asked some detailed questions on the truck that I got informed by just for those.
Right, you can share that, you just--
Was there more than what you already shared, or?
It was 2005, not 2006.
I don't know.
I guess the one thing I would add about the MOU, and I know Steve is still here tonight too, that the MOU that you approved tonight is for the schematic phase of the process, and that we already anticipate then potentially looking at a new MOU for consideration that would potentially be voted on then in July for the next phase, which would be the design drawings and the construction drawings, right, Steve? So if there's any, you know, sort of preview or conversation that you would, you know, questions for Steve or anything that people would want to ask tonight?
And in theory, Steve, to put you on the spot, that would reflect any interesting things that the condition study discovered, that the various investigations have found or will find?
Yeah, with studies that we've been doing, there is very little, I would say it's very negligible, anything that would be against, you know, doing the projects. There's a couple of areas where you've found some unsuitable soil, but it's only a foot or so, it's minor undercuts that we would change a little bit.
Sure.
In general, everything is coming back as expected, so nothing that would really significantly change moving forward. What Ramesh is going to do though, as we are getting the reports finished up, which my intent is to try to get everything over to the district by the end of next week, get it in your hands, take a look at it, so Ramesh has it also. He then is going to take all of those findings, look at all of his numbers, plus the information he has from our findings, to fine-tune the estimates moving forward, and then based on those estimates, when we get into design development and the construction documents, then that's how the MOU will be, based on his new estimates.
Right, and that was the whole point of dividing--
Correct.
--the schematic design versus the--
Yes.
--construction documents.
Yes.
To have that report give you additional background to--
Yep.
--to put good thoughts to your numbers.
Yes. And I will say that through the process of what we've been doing, we have had the opportunity to meet with both Brookfield and Riverside as far as the building departments, as well as the Preservation Commission, which had some very valuable input that we are basing our designs moving forward to meet their standards. It's, it's been good all the way around, and they've been very appreciative of us coming in early, too. Anything else?
Thank you. All right, although that, some of that discussion dovetails nicely with our next item, the Facilities Committee. Joel, any report?
The Facilities Committee met last, May 30th. Actually, one of the first thing that the committee heard was the presentation from Lakota Group, who is doing the parking and play slash traffic study.
Actually, they're--
They were presenting it, excuse me, Martha, did you--
I was just going to say that this is a presentation that, as the board had agreed, was heard in the Facilities Advisory Committee, so the committee had an opportunity to look at it, listen to it in a more in-depth way. It's actually attached here for everybody because one of the potential next action items would be then for the board to approve the Walt Hamilton Lakota Group design proposal. So again, it's not to do the work, it's really, to me, it almost is like a mini long-range planning, but it's a mini design process, really just looking at the Hauser Central outdoor campus area in a way to address separation of planned parking and flow of traffic, flow of also pedestrians, flow of bikers, that we know it's a, it's a complex area in terms of the many different users and the timing of it all.
And with, building on what Martha just said, is because it builds on usage of the site, this project won't really be in full force or full swing until the fall, when they can look at the cars coming in, and the kids coming in, bikes coming in, and--
They even said it wouldn't even be like the first few weeks of school. They want everybody to settle into routines before they, you know, if we go forward with this and approve this at the following meeting, yeah, they would start probably, like they said, late September, October possibly. That way they're actually, you know, getting a sense of the actual use of the property and not like the exciting first week.
No, and until the weather gets bad, it's not really what you see at Central and Hauser. It's the rain, that's what brings out the traffic, and it's night and day between August and bad weather.
I think they'll look at it in both, because they also want to understand, I think the other part that's intriguing here is our bike traffic on nice weather days, we do a lot of it, which is great, but making sure that, you know, we're designing for that in the best way possible.
And actually, thank you, because that, Sherri and Linda, is, they may need to stretch their analysis time period to be able to capture both of those events, when everybody's settled into bad weather and when everybody's settled into good weather, because whatever we plan on has to work for both.
And their design, you know, their design for the design is really to engage parents, community members, students, staff, in terms of really understanding sort of the full extent of use and timing, et cetera. So it'll be, it's a comprehensive process to look at sort of one subset of our long-range facility plan, but it's one that we had decided needed that carved out, just to understand everything that goes on here for about 1,000, you know, 1,000 children, really all in this campus area.
I also wondered if they have considered communicating with the village as well, for woodside drop-off, because there are things that we could be doing curbside, and with the ability to curb for drop-off to make it more efficient, just doing, walking there every day, and I know that we could be working with the village to partner in a way to--
Well, they noted too, that it's not usually the morning drop-off that's the issue. It's the afternoon.
But morning, if you talk to the women that work there and the other people, it's, it's not easy in the morning either. Mr. Gatz probably knows that, but--
I would definitely second that.
It's not easy ever. You can come at 1:00--
But in the afternoon, they'll park and hang out, and I'm just, I would love for us to see if the village can help us label those drop-offs in a different way, so--
The afternoon stuff's definitely the challenge.
Yeah.
Because there's, the nice days, it's stay and play, and on the nasty days, it's, how can I get my kids safely and get them home? And winter only makes it worse when it's snowing and the stuff's piled up from the street, because there's no, like, easement between, you know, the street and the sidewalk. It comes right up on the sidewalk, so we're dealing with that, getting kids over slushy messes and out of, you know, curbs that are four inches deep with water, so there's, it's just a constant, the season changes, but the problems just manifest in different ways.
I think the way that we enforce that, too, we have a lot of people that just aren't following the signs, which is normal, but maybe we could be a careful group of design plans.
Well, your point is good, Sherri, it's, I've spoken with one of the officers who's out there, and when the officer is out there and directing traffic, everybody behaves the way they're supposed to and goes exactly where, and when he's away, then things get a little more different.
It's always, I've always wondered, is there a schedule for that, because it seems like, yeah, when, I agree exactly, and that's my observation as well, when the officer's there, things go pretty smoothly, flow pretty well, but when someone isn't there, things can go, go down south quickly, and I don't know that there's ever been a rhyme or reason why somebody's there and somebody's not.
I'm sure that they're going to talk about this, I just think it's nice to have not just the parents and teachers, but everybody in the village--
Yes.
--in that communication, because they have to say what we do with that. I guess it's a good challenge, and we'll see what they come up with.
Right, a good problem to be solved.
Yeah.
All right.
You want to talk about any of the other, we also had fairly in-depth conversation about the central front office and ADA complexities and that.
Well, and I think the thing to say on that, sorry, Martha--
Go ahead.
--if we can just tag-team this, is the architect recognizes the difficulty of, or the lack of an obvious solution to where the front office should go, but a lot of the commentary from the parents, as well as in some of our representatives, have certainly suggested that the upper, the first floor office seems more natural.
But even within the facility committee, we have not come to any recommendations--
Correct, no, and I'm just saying that that's-- Correct, no, and I'm just saying that that's some of what we've heard.
Yeah, this meeting was great because Steve from DLA was able to bring a lot, I feel like, a lot more information than we've seen in the past, and then having Pete at that meeting as well, bringing his information, so I think Joel and I recommended that we somehow get all of that put into, you know, some sort of document so that we can analyze cost and pros and cons of everything.
Pros and cons, yes.
So that we can, as a facility, come up, or as a committee, come up with a recommendation we think is the most effective in both functionality and cost, and then present it to the board at that point, although we aren't there yet, I don't think, but it was, you know, it felt like a really fruitful conversation where I felt like more information was, you know...
It was.
It was brought, it was good.
And DLA, in their effort to engage with the village, had productive conversations with preservation especially, I think about what is and is not acceptable with that front entrance and what treats that front entrance with historic respect and yet still gets to our end goals.
Yeah, so it was a great meeting, I think we have another meeting on the calendar for June 27th at 7:30 a.m., so we will be continuing that discussion then. I feel like that, those are the two things that should have been mentioned in the meeting.
Yeah, well, and I think the last item is, DLA is still in progress of working on their capacity study, and one of the things that Martha and I talked about is, and I think even the community needs to recognize, because not everybody does, is that each of these schools is very different. They're laid out differently, they have different sizes of rooms, both large group rooms and the small group rooms, and some schools are much bigger. So, the, the end goal is that we look at the buildings in terms of what they need to do and what the spaces need to be for the kids, and not necessarily focus on each school has to have the exact same layout or square footage for a use to be effective. That each, the buildings uses, and usage tends to fit the architecture rather than the other way around. And it, it's what makes, what makes, I think I'm getting lost in my words here, but basically it's use that we're looking at.
Quality of programming, programming use, adequacy of programming. Yeah, it's been interesting, obviously, throughout the process to sort of dig in deeply with each principle and really look at, and exactly, really as Joel just said, that we use the architecture that's available to us, you know, it's mostly functional, we know we need to make some increases and some changes in some areas, and, but it will perhaps never exactly be square footage-wise apples to apples, but I believe we're moving really positively in the direction of adequacy of, our thing we said is, you know, adequate learning spaces for all, and that's really what our plan encompasses.
And that's probably the best summary that Martha had, is adequate, adequate spaces. Do they serve the programming that we need? And that's our goal and that's what the capacity study will reflect.
I think that's it for the Facilities Committee, right?
All right.
Thanks, I like this tag-team thing.
Thank you, Facilities Committee. We have a report from the Policy Committee.
I'll be very quick.
Do we have anything to report from the Personnel Committee?
Not at this time.
Do we have any report from the Education Committee?
Only one special comment I'd like to make for Ms. Frey and Lo, we are ever thankful for supporting our staff, letting them teach others in their own community, which is something that not all districts do. Professional development's amazing, all the curriculum that you've helped us, gap and focus, I can't even name the amount of curriculum because there are so many pieces, IQuests, reading, social studies, PE standards, she has helped us tremendously to gap a plethora of state initiatives and has done it marvelously, and we're so thankful for everything you've done for us.
It is amazing. State of the law.
I just wanted to thank the current board as well as the previous board members who gave me the opportunity to come and work in this incredible place and this incredible district. I visited, thank you Bob, I visited.
Did you get your good sign?
Yeah, I visited District 128 recently and I, and I said to them, you know, if I, if I can even replicate half of the enthusiasm and energy and commitment of the staff there that I have here, it will be an amazing place, because these teachers are really second to none. I've never worked with a staff that has this level of commitment to doing what is best for children and at the point of sacrificing themselves at times where I feel like they're getting to the edge of a bridge and might want to jump, but it's all because they just want to do what's best for kids, so they want to move quickly and as swiftly as possible when they know change is necessary. So I've been very lucky to be a part of this group and I will take relationships with me, I will take the learning that I've done in terms of learning from them and from all of you with me as I move on to a superintendency, and hopefully I will be as successful there as I have felt here and as supported as I have felt here, so thank you again for the opportunity.
Thanks, Martha.
And we wish you nothing but the best in your next job. We'll miss you, but we know it'll be great.
We'll miss you most definitely, wish you the best of luck in your superintendency, feel free to stop by at any future public meeting.
You're already by my side. Yeah, you know, because you're going to have money for it, yeah.
Yes.
Right, you will kind of pass by this way, right?
All right. Is there any further public comment? All right, if not, future date, meeting dates, on June 19th, regular business meeting has been canceled. For June 26th, 2019, regular business meeting is rescheduled, 7:00 p.m. start in the Hauser Learning Resource Center, board will enter into closed session at 6:30 p.m. if necessary and return to open session at 7:00 p.m. July 3rd, 2019, committee, the whole meeting, has been canceled. July 17th, 2019, regular business meeting, 7:00 p.m. in the Hauser Learning Center, board will enter into closed session at 6:30 p.m. if necessary, return to open session at 7:00 p.m. At this time, is there a motion to re-enter into closed session?
So moved.
Do you have to, you have to...
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Okay, so this is a closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity, and the purpose or release of real property for the use of the district, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired.
So moved.
Second.
Margie, please call the roll.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Muirhead?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Oh, yeah, well, I think we say that for Bob, but yeah, well, we're not coming back to open session.
Yes, we're not coming back to open session.
Well, you'll be back in open session, but there will be no business conducted.
There will be no business after that.
There will be no business, no action.
No action, we're not hiding from Bob.
Yeah. Jeff had four years.
It takes time.
Okay.
All right, please call the roll.
All right, I'm going to start from the beginning.
Perfect.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Muirhead?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Motion carried.